Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to tonight's City of Wildwood's Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of November 18th, 2019. Travis, can I have a roll call, commission members?
Commissioner Humphrey.
Here.
Commissioner Levitt, Commissioner Cohn, Commissioner Gragnani, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Depler, Commissioner Simpson, Chair Lee, Councilmember Werther.
Present. Sorry.
Mayor Bowlin.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Tonight, we have one information report, two correspondence items, and one other item for update. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from last? Councilman Werther and Commissioner Simpson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, passes. Does the department have any opening remarks?
Mr. Chair, just one. If you didn't notice, we have a new face down on one side of the dais. That is Drew Weber. He is in practice with John Young, the city attorney. Mr. Young was not available tonight, so Mr. Weber is filling in, and we'd like to thank him.
Mr. Newberry, public comments?
I have one public comment card, Mr. Hudson.
These are comments regarding P&amp;Z 15-17. "I sincerely thank the planning department and all the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, current and past, for your determination to assess the condition of the lake water. On May 25th, 2017, the waterfall was first turned on and my wife suffered respiratory problems when exposed to its aerosol. On May 29th, 2017, I notified the city that my wife's respiratory symptoms may be from harmful algal bloom toxins. I am relieved, yet concerned, to finally find that the lake does indeed contain the HAB toxin, microcystin, the long suspected cause of our symptom. Even though the petitioner's refusal to allow testing in early August or at depths near the level of the waterfall intake undermined the commission's intent of testing the water during peak summer heat, the test results are informative. According to EPA, chlorophyll A is a measure of the amount of algae growing in a water body." One second. Chlorophyll A concentration in this lake was found to be 44 micrograms per liter. What does that mean? The Missouri Department of Natural Resources classifies lakes under its jurisdiction in our Ozark Highland region to be impaired for excess nutrients when the chlorophyll A concentration is greater than 15 micrograms per liter. This lake has nearly three times as much algae as a worst-case, non-impaired lake. Why might this be? Algae need water, sunlight, and the nutrients phosphorus and nitrogen to grow. The water test found in the total ... The water test found the total phosphorus concentration was 300 micrograms per liter, which is over 18 times the Missouri Department of Natural Resources impaired lake warning threshold of 16 micrograms per liter. In March 2018, the petitioner submitted a water test which showed a phosphorus level of 50 micrograms per liter, which was three times the warning threshold. And in April 2018, I suggested to the commission that a more complete water test was needed. Since that time, the total phosphorus level has increased by a factor of six. The total nitrogen concentration from the recent test was 1,600 micrograms per liter, which is about four times the MoDNR impaired lake warning threshold of 401 micrograms per liter. The Water Quality Monitoring Section Chief of MoDNR reviewed the ARDL report and told us that all three components greatly exceeded the listed nutrient criteria and that these high levels of nutrients would promote algae growth all year, including through the winter months, and that the microcystin toxin levels can spike from a bloom within one day at any time and anywhere in the lake. MoDNR said that regardless of nutrient criteria, cyanobacteria present a number of concerns, and given that toxin presence has already been identified, the level of concern may be increased. Given the nutrient levels presented, it is likely that cyanobacteria blooms will be a problem for this lake. If this lake were the responsibility of MoDNR, it would likely be placed on a remediation plan. I respectfully request the commission seek the guidance of MoDNR for remediation of this excess nutrient impaired lake. Now, knowing that this lake is excessively nutrient-rich and contains a known toxin harmful to humans, which will multiply rapidly in these conditions, knowing that the predominant westerly wind provides a nearly constant mechanism to propel small toxin-containing droplets onto our property, and knowing that running the waterfall for 10 to 12 hours per day without authorization did not clean the lake, but rather transferred algae growths to the waterfall, as seen in the earlier photograph, I request that the waterfall not be operated until the lake water is remediated and treated. The active dispersal of any other toxin with known health consequences should not and likely would not be approved by this commission. The petitioner repeatedly claims that illness from a pathogen source 15 miles away is as likely as from 150 feet away. He neglects to consider that an aerosol plume spreads out as it flows, and the dosage from a source 15 miles away would be approximately 250,000 times smaller than from a source 150 feet away. The petitioner repeatedly claims that the waterfall could not operate when my wife experienced respiratory symptoms in August 2019. However, an on-duty Wildwood police officer witnessed and documented the waterfall running and its odor on August 19th, 2019, after my wife was exposed. Two of the three photos showing broken pump couplings presented by the petitioner were of the same pump and were taken over a month after the officer's visit. Perhaps someone other than the petitioner was turning the waterfall on and off. There are surely companies who are experts in controlling the problem of algae growth found in this lake, and the petitioner should pursue these avenues. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Newberry?
No more speaker cards.
Mr. Newberry, moving on, old business, PZ 15-19.
PZ 15-19, Chesterfield Montessori School, 1400 Ladue Road, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. A request for a conditional use permit in NU Non-Urban Residence District and FPNU Floodplain Non-Urban Residence District for a 7.19 acre tract of land that is located on the southeast side of Babler Park Drive, west of State Route 109. Locator number 20W420051. Street address 17950 Pond Bridge Road. Proposed use: outdoor education center to be utilized by a private, not-for-profit elementary school with supporting storage structure, which is inclusive of a covered patio area, associated parking lot, and a vault-type restroom facility, Ward 3.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration tonight a information report with recommendation regarding the request that Mr. Newberry just read into tonight's record. The particular property, that is, the subject of the request is approximately seven acres in size, located on what the department describes as the east side of State Route BA, south of its intersection with State Route 109. The majority of the property is impacted by floodplain, and a major area of the property is also designated floodway. All of these areas are of primary concern to the City of Wildwood, and as you can see from the plan that's been provided by the petitioner, none of those areas are intended to be disturbed by improvements associated with this particular proposal. Principally, the intent of the conditional use permit request is to construct a small parking lot area with safe access off of State Route 109 to a building that will act in several ways or have several functions. Principally, it will be an area for the students to gather, it will also offer storage, and then cover for certain activities if the weather becomes inclement. A vault-styled restroom is shown as a future improvement, and in the report that's been provided, along with the conditions, the department does address that as well. The department in its analysis is recommending favorable support of the requested permit. As is noted in the report, there are four components or standards that are required to be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission when considering conditional use permits. Those relate to planning good, planning practice, impacts on permitted uses, in this particular instance, the surrounding residential properties, visual compatibility, and then finally, the benefit to the community derived from the conditional use itself. And all four of those components are standards the department believes the proposal as submitted does comply. I think overarching any of the specifics that are detailed in the analysis is the fact that the petitioner, other than the two locations that have been described, the parking lot area and the building pad, does not intend to disturb any of the floodway, floodplain, or remaining property. For all intents and purposes, the property will retain its current appearance, function, and use, other than having schoolchildren that will access it for learning purposes. In component four or standard four, the department does note that having a location for school-aged children to come and be in a natural setting to understand the natural systems, how they function together, how to work to improve them, how to understand them, certainly does have a high community benefit, in the opinion of the department. So much now, much of what is known about nature comes from a textbook, not feet on the ground and hands in the dirt. And here, in this particular instance, this institution is trying to change that, and this particular proposal, I think, is a good representation of what Wildwood would like to see from a development standpoint. Given the limited amount of disturbance, the minimal amount of improvements, and the intent to provide an educational setting on State Route BA near Babler State Park, the department is recommending the favorable consideration of the permit by the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight. Mr. Chair, after the floor is open for discussion or a motion is made, the Department of Planning, Mr. Newberry, and I, along with Mr. Weber, will be glad to address any questions or respond to your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Open the floor for a motion or discussion. Commissioner Gregg Nani.
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the department's recommendation.
Second by Commissioner Humphrey. Councilman Werther.
Thank you. Mr. Vunich, going back through this and reviewing again, a couple of the nearby residents just raised the question about with the planned improvements, they raised a concern about whether or not the property or access to the property might be gated off or chained off at all, and I don't recall seeing that anywhere in the conditions listed by the department. Is that something the department anticipates having occur here? Or is this ... I mean, granted, we may not obviously have a history of problems here, but putting more use into it, putting newer materials, newer buildings, or other equipment may make it more of a magnet in that regard, so I just didn't know where the department was on that.
You are correct. There was comments relating to the accessibility of the property for, let's say, non-student or school use. The department failed to include that as a condition in the report, and so, the maker of the motion and the second were willing, we can certainly address that before the letter of recommendation is presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission for final action.
Commissioner Gregg Nani.
Yes, that's fine with me. I have one other additional question, and that is, I see in the report or in the conditions that it lists hours of operation from, I forget what, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 to 7:00 on Saturdays. I'm assuming that the school has no intent at this point to do any kind of overnight activities or, you know, bonfires or anything like that?
During the public hearing, none of those type of activities, let's say nighttime activities or events in the evening, were discussed. I fully expect that, over the course of the next two weeks, that the petitioner may identify a condition or two that they would like to discuss with the Planning and Zoning Commission before final action is taken on the permit request. That may be one of them. There is a representative from the petitioner, Chesterfield Montessori School. If you'd like to direct that to that representative, with the chair's permission, the department will yield the podium.
If she wants to come up, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we don't have any plans for evening activities. Generally, the students go out there during the day. I think the latest they've ever been out there for any kind of activity after school once or twice a year has been until, you know, 6:00 or 7:00 in the evening when it was still light out, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, not knowing how the property is currently utilized or will be fully utilized in a year, two-year, or more, there may be some benefit to nighttime hours. Although the night sky isn't as brilliant as it was 25 years ago when I started here, there is still more stars in Wildwood's sky than most anywhere else in the St. Louis County area, so astronomy, those types of activities, just putting a telescope on the property and giving the schoolchildren an opportunity, may be something that is worth retaining some late hours.
Right, and I don't have a problem with the late hours, I'm just concerned, and I see in here where you've included no live or recorded music that should be played outdoors, so that, you know, I'm concerned about, obviously, the residents who live in proximity to it, and I mean, I don't have a problem really even with the bonfire at night, that's all. And I just wanted to make sure that they were aware that that was in there and that, you know, that's part of the conditions for this. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, we have a motion in a second for approving staff's recommendation. Roll call, vote.
And, Mr. Chair, before the vote is taken, that motion will include the security component relative to access into and out of the site.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gragnani?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin?
Yes.
Thank you, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The recommendation was approved by unanimous vote, and the department intends to have the final draft letter of recommendation back for commission consideration in two weeks. Thank you again.
Thank you. Moving on, correspondence item one.
"A response to communication from Andrean Miller, The Miller House, 2612 East Avenue, Wildwood, Missouri, 63040, which is dated October 29, 2019, regarding St. Louis County's PC 112-89 Cliff Ruffgar, amended C8 Plan Commercial District, Town Center Workplace District, south of Manchester Road, east side of East Avenue. Street address 2612 East Avenue, locator number 24V510441. That provides a recommendation on requested modifications to the existing site-specific governing ordinance to allow the permitted uses authorized by it to include stores or shops for retail purposes, to be in conjunction with the existing coffee shop, lounge/bar, event space, and a shared office ... shared use office concept, Ward 8."
Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration tonight a letter with recommendation relative to the request relating to this commercial business that is located on East Avenue, a short distance south of Manchester Road. In the letter, the department provides an extensive background on the history of this particular site, noting its original rezoning occurred by St. Louis County and was a tax shop and feed store operated by the petitioner of name Cliff Ruffgar. That particular business did operate for a number of years, but subsequently closed, and then the use of the property went through a series of starts and stops. Most recently, Ms. Miller, the petitioner in tonight's request, presented to the city a proposal to use the existing building for a range of activities, and under the name of Miller House. Those activities included a bar, a co-working space, and other activities, all within the confines of the Workplace District, which this property is designated under the Town Center Plan. One activity or use that was not considered was specialty stores and shops. Another business that is located in the Grover area is interested in relocating, and they are a retail-type business. The retail-type business would be located within the confines of the existing building and not require any additional square footage to be added to the structure nor additional parking. The proposal also requires that retail space to comply with all of the conditions in place that were established for the Miller House when originally considered by the city in It is important to note that the Town Center Regulating Plan, again, designates this property Workplace District, and under the list of available or potential uses is specialty retail and shops. As noted, given the original history of the property as a retail entity, and the success that Ms. Miller has had with the Miller House, and the fact that this is a local business wanting to stay in Town Center, specifically the Grover area, and no changes to the site or plan, the department is recommending favorable consideration tonight to the Planning and Zoning Commission. As identified in the conditions associated with the report, there is just a single change, adding specialty retail stores and shop. Mr. Chair, after the floor is open for discussion or a motion is made, the Department of Planning, along with Mr. Weber, will be available to answer any questions or respond to your comments relative to this report and the associated recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Entertain a motion or discussion. Councilman Werther?
Motion to go ahead and approve.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bowlin. Seeing no discussion, okay. Commissioner Gregg Nani.
Mr. Vunich, I'm assuming since they have to comply with all of the original requirements, that that would include the signage? So, they could, I didn't get by there today, I meant to and I didn't, to see what kind of current signage they have. I assume they could redo the current sign and just add the other shop onto that signage?
There is a freestanding monument sign that is placed on the property along the East Avenue frontage. At one point, the department recommended, and this was several years ago, that it be eliminated. The city council retained it, and since that time, it's been contained in the ordinance. That sign can't exceed 30 square feet, so the two users, if they choose, would have to either somehow divide that square footage amongst themselves. There is no wall signage at this time, as I recall. That may be an option for consideration, but at this stage, there is one freestanding monument sign. Ms. Miller has a very small sign associated with that structure, but it certainly doesn't reach the extent of 30 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Seeing no further discussion, roll call, vote.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gragnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin?
Yes.
All that passes by a unanimous vote. This will be forwarded to City Council for the next available public hearing date.
Moving on to correspondence item number two.
"Approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission's action upon the city's five-year capital improvement plan as required by Chapter 89 of the Missouri Revised Statutes, which states that this administrative body must review and act on this planning program so as to ensure consistency with the city's master plan." All wards.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as many of you recall, about this time each year, the city council's proposed five-year capital improvements plan is presented to this body for consideration and recommendation. Such a requirement to submit the draft or the proposed five-year capital improvements plan is set forth in state statute relative to cities that have zoning subdivision authorities along with the master plan. The text of the state statute is set forth at the bottom of Page 1 and a portion at the top of Page 2. In past years, the Department of Planning, along with the Departments of Administration and Public Works, have compiled an ambitious five-year capital improvements plan. The ambitious nature of it is the number of roads, bridges, sidewalks, street maintenance, parks, trails, building improvements here at City Hall, and others that were identified for consideration and future action, construction, and finally, use. This year, if you've reviewed the 2020 component of the five-year plan, you will see that there are less projects that are anticipated, and that is a function of this year's there are less projects that are anticipated, and that is a function of this year's extensive capital improvements efforts and a desire to build the reserve fund that's associated with the capital improvements program over the course of the next few years. It is not to say that any of the standard maintenance requirements will not be addressed this year. Slab replacement and traditional subdivisions will go forward, asphalt, street resurfacing in rural areas will continue, and certainly, the roadways, bridges, parks, and trails will be maintained to the highest level possible. But I think what you'll see here is that as we've completed a number of bridge replacements, have established parks and trails, have constructed City Hall, and made other improvements to the quality of life in Wildwood, the next five years may not seem as ambitious, but certainly will retain and, in the opinion of the department, improve the quality of life in Wildwood for its residents and visitors. The department would want to identify just a couple of items. First, under parks, the major project in 2020 will be the Ward 5 Neighborhood Park. This past Saturday, the mayor oversaw a groundbreaking at the location. Ms. Depler, one of our commission members, along with Ms. Gragnani were in attendance. That will be a major endeavor of the department over the course of 2020. Along with that, there are a, a major bridge replacement project on Etherington Road that is planned. And then finally, this will hopefully be the year in 2020 that we make strides in bringing broadband-speed internet access to our rural areas. There are a number of steps that were completed in 2019 to lay a solid foundation for that, this upcoming year to hopefully find solutions that have plagued that area now for a very, very long time. The Department of Administration, the Department of Planning and Parks, and the Department of Public Works have collectively worked to bring this five-year plan to City Council. Efforts on the part of the mayor, the city administrator, the finance manager, and our treasurer have refined it, and tonight, the department is presenting it for a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Obviously, there are a number of projects. The department will do its very best to respond to any questions or comments regarding those projects, but as I say, much is being driven by the desire of our City Council to build our reserve fund again for the future. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, after the floor is open for discussion or a motion is made, the Department of Planning and Parks along, I believe, the mayor and councilmember Werther will be able to respond to any comments and address any questions that might arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. I'll open up for motion or discussion. Mayor Boland?
I would move that the proposed capital improvement plan be approved.
Motion? Second? Commissioner Helfrey? Any further discussion? Seeing none? Move to roll call vote?
Commissioner Gragnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Helfrey?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Mayor Boland?
Yes.
Thank you, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. As I say, it's a little different approach, particularly for 2020, but again, I can assure you that every effort will be made to improve the quality of life in the city of Wildwood through our capital improvements efforts. Thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Newberry, we have another item.
Sir. Report with results of water testing regarding PZ 15-17 Babler Farms LLC care of Tom Roberts 550 Lori Lane, Wildwood, Missouri 63005. A conditional use permit in the NU non-urban residence district for a 59.9 acre tract of land that is located at the terminus of Lori Lane. Locator numbers 20X630015 and 20X630024. Street addresses 50550 Lori Lane. Authorized conditional use an existing large water feature, lake, and associated waterfall structure as defined by Section 415.030 of the City of Wildwood's zoning regulations. The large water feature is 3.4 acres in size, Ward 1.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has prepared for you a letter which upstates the progress being made by the city relative to the large water feature and associated waterfall Mr. Newberry just described for the purposes of tonight's record. I think it is important to note that this particular discussion has been ongoing for a number of months, and that tonight, the department is presenting as an attachment to the update letter, the results of the water testing that was conducted at the beginning of October of this year. In association with the report from the testing firm ARDL Incorporated of Mount Vernon, Illinois, are a number of other items that have been subsequently provided to you either via email from the petitioner, in this case, Mr. Roberts. The information provided to you tonight prior to the start of the meeting from Mr. and Mrs. Hudson, and then other items that Mr. Dickerson of ARDL Incorporated have provided to the city at the request of the Department of Planning. Those include an explanation of the one component of the testing relating to the algae and bacteria, and then today, councilmember Werther wanted a little primer on what all of the abbreviations mean in one of the tables. That information was placed at your chairs tonight. Suffice to say that the results of the water testing can be contested. Certainly, there are many different opinions about what they might mean or not mean. ARDL did provide an opinion on all three components, that being the pathogens, the bacteria, algae, and then the chemical or mineral types. There are other opinions from the scientist that was asked to review the results by the petitioner, Mr. Roberts, and certainly, you heard tonight from Mr. Hudson. The department is not asking for a final action tonight relative to the water testing and the conclusion of the discussion relative to the waterfall and its safety or non-safety. The intent of providing the information tonight was twofold, to let the Planning and Zoning Commission members have access to it, have an opportunity to review it in advance of tonight's discussion, and then provide any questions, comments, or additional items they would like the Department of Planning to pursue. The second component was to hear from the public, those that would want to speak during public participation on the testing results. It is the intent of the department in two weeks, if given the authority by the Planning and Zoning Commission, to prepare a final report with recommendation, but tonight is an opportunity to collectively review the results, the additional information that has been provided by other parties, and ensure that when that report is prepared by the Department of Planning for consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission, no stone, no stone has been left unturned. So tonight, the department is respectfully requesting any feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and if appropriate, at the conclusion of that discussion, direction relative to the final report and its preparation. The department would conclude by saying that it has been contacted by the representative from Missouri Department of Natural Resources that oversees the Water Quality Division of that state agency. Unfortunately, today, I was in meetings for the entirety and was unable to contact her before tonight, but even if I had been able to contact the individual, I think it's important that anything that would be discussed and any information provided be in written form, therefore, all available to the Planning and Zoning Commission and any interested party. It will be the intent of the Department of Planning to contact that individual to ascertain any comments that the state of Missouri may have regarding the test results. And again, from the perspective of the department at this stage, another component in the information pie that will be provided to you in two weeks with your permission. So, Mr. Chair, the department is available to accept any comments, to hear your questions, and then take that information and proceed forward, hopefully, in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Questions? Councilman Werther?
I do. Mr. Vunich, there are a number of pieces of paper at our chairs tonight. I know this one was provided by Mr. Hudson, and I assume the attached, and since it was stapled together, that was as well. There's also a letter from Lynn Milberg with Water Quality Management Section Chief at Missouri Department of Natural Resources. Who's the source of this particular document? Is that Mr. Hudson as well?
Mr. Hudson provided that one.
Okay. And then, there's the background on numeric nutrient criteria from Missouri Lakes. The source for that?
Also from Mr. Hudson.
Okay. Then I think everything else I can account for, right? Thank you for reaching out to Mr. Dickerson and providing the explanations for the column headers, working in a business telecommunications where there's enough acronyms floating around. I'd looked at several of them, and I came up with way too many definitions, so I appreciate having the clarification.
As you can see, he was glad to help.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a couple of questions.
Certainly, sir.
So, this has been going on quite some time. Why are we just now hearing from, and this is not, this is for the sake of asking the question, not rhetorical, from MDR? I mean...
Well, certainly, MDR is not involved in the assessment of impair, impairment or not on water bodies of less than 10 acres, at least that's my understanding. This particular large water feature is three and a half acres, so jurisdictionally, they have no authority. If the Planning and Zoning Commission feels that their input would not necessarily be helpful, certainly, they can direct the department to proceed forward without it, but in this particular case, they have no jurisdiction, at least that I know of, and certainly, Mr. Weber and Mr. Young can determine that much better than I. But secondly, and probably equally important, is we just received the test results, so we're, we have something tangible to provide to others at this stage.
And is it the case, and we're gonna get, I'm gonna get the test results in just a second, but is it the case that the person from MDR, are they gonna be of the same caliber of the person that we have paid taxpayer money to, to do the, the study in this, or is this just someone else at MDR?
Well, I'm, my understanding is the individual that contacted me is the division chief or section chief of the Water Quality Section. The specialty she has is lakes, impoundments, et cetera. But certainly, when I contact her, I'm sure she can provide her qualifications to provide that level of assurance to all parties, particularly, from my perspective, to the commission members, that, that she is qualified to offer an opinion. Certainly, anybody can offer opinion, but at this stage, we need concise and relative information, not that someone would think, oh, it's bad or it's good, no.
Yeah. And we've paid for that with taxpayer money?
Yes.
Okay. And isn't it the case that the result, in essence, just putting it in a nutshell, from the consultant said that there are, there are no hazards here relative to human beings? I mean, that's, that's the gist I got from it, is that, in essence, the case?
Yes. As I mentioned at the last meeting two weeks ago, none of the pathogens tested were found in the sample from the waterfall. They basically said the pathogen panel was clean. They noted that in terms of the general chemistry, nutrient, microbiology, that there were no adnormally high results were found, and then on a follow-up relative to the bacteria and algae, they, gentleman from AD, ARDL said that there was, they did not, I believe, as he phrased it, anything that was out of the ordinary.
Commissioner Depler? Go ahead.
Thank you. So, my first question is in regard to, I thought the plan forward a few months ago when we were planning the sampling was to have a robust sample of this water, and it seems to me that one sample taken essentially later in the season than we'd earlier anticipated, to me, puts the results that we've received a little in suspect, because any analysis that you do is dependent on the quality of the samples. And if you have one sample at one time that actually is after the growing season of these algae and other components of the water, leads me to be a little concerned about, you know, basing our decision on this when our plan was to have a robust sample of this sample. So, is there any pushback that we could, I don't, I mean, I don't want this to keep dragging on, it's, it's hard, but in any samples that we take now, you know, the, the growing season for these microbes and algae is past. So, I just want everybody to kind of take it with a grain of salt that we do not have a robust sample of this water feature at this time.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Sometimes luck plays a major role in any process. In this particular instance, as many of you are aware, this past September was the hottest September on record. I spent three days at the barbecue bash, which was the end of September, and it exceeded 90 degrees, so at least from the perspective of the department, I don't think we went into a long and uninterrupted cool spell that might have affected, let's say, what was happening in that large water feature. I could be wrong, but I would respond by saying that Mr. Dickerson was given free access to the property the day that the testing was completed. The number of samples taken of the waterfall structure were not impeded by the property owner. The property owner did, though, limit us to only one sample of the lake or the large water feature. My instructions to Mr. Dickerson was to take that, that, that sample at the most critical location where you think will get the best results in terms of understanding the water quality of it. Mr. Roberts did not restrict Mr. Dickerson's access to the large water feature after those instructions were provided. So, again, I think from a sampling standpoint, ARDL Incorporated was chosen because they do extensive work for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. One of our former Planning and Zoning Commission members was able to provide the contact for this particular firm, and I feel pretty strongly that, at least from the standpoint of the waterfall, all the protocols that were needed were followed. Again, would I, would have liked to had multiple samples of the large water feature at different depths, certainly, but that was just not something that was going to occur that day.
Commissioner Gragnani?
Mr. Vunich, I, I agree with what Commissioner Depler has said. I, I am concerned about the fact that we only have one water sample from the lake and that it was not taken at the depth at which the water is taken into the pumps to supply the water to the waterfall. It was taken, as I understand it, from along the, the edge of the lake, so that, to me, is, is a problem. Again, it was not taken at what Missouri DNR says is the optimum time of the year to have taken the sample, which would have been more midsummer rather than early fall. It was taken, as I understand it, from along the edge of the lake. So that, to me, is, is a problem. Again, it was not taken at what Missouri D N R says is the optimum time of the year to have taken the sample, which would have been more midsummer rather than early fall. And obviously, we have some disagreement here as to whether or not the sample is good or the sample, I mean, the, the results are okay or not okay. I mean, Missouri D N R, using their standards, to me, indicates that it's not, you know, not that the results aren't liable, but that it's, that it is, there is a problem with the lake. And it was my understanding when we approved this, that ARDL said that they were not going to give us an interpretation, and now, all of a sudden, they're giving us an interpretation. And I thought we were going to have to find someone else to interpret it.
Well, I'll assume responsibility because I asked the testing firm to provide at least some direction on what was being, what the results might be. They were chosen for their independence, their expertise, and the fact that they do this on a regular basis for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which manages many, many large impoundments of water for recreational purposes, potable water purposes, et cetera. So I will never call into question ARDL, and in fact, I wanted to hear from them, quite frankly.
I'm not either, but I guess I wonder, I mean, I was, I was under the understanding that they weren't going to do it, and then they did. So I guess I don't, you know, I don't know how you resolve the issue, and other than maybe getting someone else to look at it, at the results and say, you know, which one is the acceptable, you know, is, is correct, excuse me, is correct.
Well, again, Ms. Gregg Donahue, the department nor the city placed any parameters on ARDL relative to the testing of the large water feature. The opinion that I think we all held was that they would do at least three samples, one at a, at surface level, so to speak, one at mid-range, and then one near the bottom of the, the impoundment, near the piping. Again, that did not occur.
Right.
I was, I felt fortunate to get the one sample because, as we started today, Mr. Roberts had some hesitancy of allowing any sampling of the large water feature. And I will still continue to note that we went from a cool August to a very, very hot September, and the testing occurred at the start of October, not mid-October.
No, I, I understand all of that, but, but, you know, it's, it's still, it was, the sample was taken from the top of the lake and not the level at which the water is pumped up the waterfall. So to me, there's going to be a difference in what's in the lake at the very surface as compared to eight feet down, where I understand the water to be sucked up into the pumps.
And again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but the only, the, the testing of the large water feature was done because it is the source. The more important testing to the department at this stage was the waterfall structure, since that's where the water is dispersed, aerosized, and then taken by wind and creates the issue. So from the perspective of the department, the more robust sampling, as Ms. Depler has called it, did occur where it needed to occur, and that was in the waterfall structure.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Boland?
So I guess I would just say a couple of things, well, before I say a question, what, can you refresh our recollection, Joe? What did we pay from city funds for this study?
At the end, it, the contract was not to exceed $4,800.
Okay.
And I think we've expended close to $4,000 of that $4,800.
Okay. So we have an authorization of $5,000, and to suggest that we want to spend $5,000 of our residents' money to get a report that doesn't have conclusions in it, so we can go spend more money to get someone to tell us what those conclusions are, seems to me to be a little beyond the pale, that can be justified. If we have an issue with this report and what we've spent for and what the results are, then we should pass a motion to request the consultant to refund the money and see what happens with that.
I would argue against such a motion.
I would, too.
And second it because, again, ARDL did not, at any time, take a side. They were given full rein by the department to establish the protocol. And in fact, Mr. Roberts and the Hutsons were allowed to review the protocol and make comment and request additions, which were done. And for the most part, the department did not provide any oversight, any input during the testing. The department was there at the testing to ensure that it occurred, it was done professionally, which I believe it was. And again, I can only speak highly of ARDL Incorporated based upon my experience with them to date.
Commissioner Gregg Donahue.
You're, you're going to talk to the person at Missouri D N R, I assume, sometime next, this week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. I, I guess what I would like to happen is for, when you do speak with, with this person, is to, to find out, one, would be whether the, the fact that the sampling of the lake was taken at the surface has any bearing on, what the bearing is in terms of whether there would be a difference or, you know, that it wasn't taken at the level of the, where the pumps suck in the water? What difference does, you know, how much difference does that make? And what she would, what her thoughts would be about that? And I guess to, to, if she has any explanation for why the results in her mind say that this lake is impaired, it was when, and ARDL says it's not. I mean, I would assume that the standards for a lake, whether it be three and a half acres or 10 acres, shouldn't, shouldn't be any different. But I don't know that. I'm not an expert, lake expert, obviously.
And again, all I am reciting is the fact that their jurisdiction ends at large water features that are less than 10 acres in size. That may just be a matter of, there's so many of them across the state of Missouri, it'd be impractical and possible and very expensive to provide that oversight. It may just be practical terms. The questions I would pose to the individual is, is it typical that you have large impoundments, over 10 acres in size, that have a pumping system that can pump water at 550 gallons per minute? Does it affect what the, the source water is by the pumping of that? Because it's not a static body when it's pumped through a system of piping and then dispersed at the end of a rock, or the start of a rock waterfall. So that's a question I have. Certainly, is the impact different between large and small features of this nature? And so I have some questions that I would like answered, and with the permission of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is my intent to talk to the state and obtain answers to your questions as well as the department.
I would appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Councilman, or Commissioner Beatty, and then I'll go to Councilman Werther.
Um, is, so you said there were several samples taken along the waterfall. I assume one was pretty close to the top, right?
Actually, we, we are about two-thirds the way up. And again, the, Mr. Dickerson of ARDL Incorporated chose that location. He could have picked any location along the stretch.
Because, yeah, my impression was that the waterfall is the issue, as opposed to the lake, and so it doesn't really matter what's in the lake if it, if it's not getting into the waterfall. And if the waterfall is clean, then to me, it should be okay.
I think that's a good assumption, that if the testing of the water in the waterfall is not harmful to the public's health, then it should be okay.
Councilman Werther?
Thank you. Mr. Vinnich, I appreciate the desire to go ahead and get the additional questions asked of Missouri Department of Natural Resources. I think it'll be helpful to help clarify, you know, what we're reading here, what I'm trying to read through her letter, I think that she sent to Mr. Hudson at this point, and, and get us a clear picture on exactly where concerns lie, or don't lie, for that matter. I mean, for everybody involved, the Hutsons, the Roberts. I mean, Mr. Roberts had stated, I think he said he had to replace some parts in the pumps. Who knows? Maybe something that's in this body of water is causing the pump parts to wear out. We don't know, but it's maybe something to figure out. So I appreciate that and look forward to hearing, hearing or reading the results of that particular discussion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Helfry.
So, Mr. Vinnich, my question to you is, from this point forward, what happens? What's, what's the steps going forward? Because I am, I also believe that there needs to be just kind of, just pardon the pun, but the waters are kind of muddied up here with all these numbers and statistics, and, they can be interpreted, it seems to me, a lot of different ways. So going forward from this point, what is the plan from your department?
Well, good, bad, or indifferent, it would be the intent of the department to provide the Planning and Zoning Commission a recommendation two weeks from tonight relative to the water quality issue. If that recommendation is that the water quality is acceptable based upon all the sources, then the next step in the process is to complete the site development plan for the conditional use permit, and that is typically the final step in that process. If at the meeting in two weeks, the department has discovered information via the state of Missouri or other sources that indicate that the water is problematic, then I think the conversation the department would like to have with the Roberts is what can be done to treat the water so it is not problematic, and the public health is protected, but you have the ability to use your waterfall and enjoy your large water feature.
As far as the CUP goes, those are revisited every, soft and correct, and so how often would this be re, looked at, I guess?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think initially, it was a one-year cycle after, let's say, all the process was completed. So we really haven't started that anniversary date, so to speak, to measure the year, and I think that are after every three years. Mr. Newberry, my assistant, is looking that up on our shared drive, so we'll have a verified answer for you in a second.
Well, you don't have to do it right this second. That would be just a question I'd like to have answered. So, so we will revisit it within a year after, once we have something finalized.
Yes, because regardless of what comes out of the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding, regarding the water testing, there is already in the conditional use permit a requirement that the petitioner at the headwaters of the lake provide a water quality treatment. And the intent was to use the standards that MSD applies to remove particulates, oils, greases, et cetera, that come from runoff associated with fertilized lawns, agricultural fields, and streets, roads, and other impervious surfaces.
Okay, so I have a question about that. What you, what I, what you just said was that part of the CUP is going to require Mr. Roberts to treat his water? That's part of the CUP?
Yes, but it's a more natural treatment process. It's not the, let's say, placement of other chemicals in the water itself. It's planting, it's like rain gardens and amended soils and things along those lines, like you see in many of our new residential subdivisions.
So i, if that's done, would that then change the results of these tests in the fact that it would improve the quality of the water regarding these tests?
The intent is to improve the quality of water regardless of what the water testing had shown. The assumption of the department is, is that there's, there's both wildlife and horses and other animals on the property. They all have droppings, et cetera, and that by just putting at the headwaters of the lake a simple treatment system that's natural-based, that we would improve the quality at that point. But if the water testing ultimately indicates that that's not sufficient, then the Planning and Zoning Commission could say, yes, we want one other step, and that's the placement of some type of additive chemical or something akin to that into the, into the lake itself.
Okay. Thank you for answering all my questions.
It's a one-year and three-year. I guessed right. I'm buying a lottery ticket on the way home. Ms. Simpson had a question.
Commissioner Simpson. That's the action anyway, isn't it?
Well, I, I would request that respectfully and with a motion if there's a second.
So I have a second? Second by Commissioner Depler. Voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
So from the perspective of the department, it will do its due diligence in additional research over the next couple of weeks, but in two weeks, we will have a report with recommendation regarding the results of the water testing. Certainly, it is at the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission to act upon that recommendation. And if additional time is needed, certainly, you can take that, but if not, the department will have something ready for you to consider. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Vinnich.
Mr. Chair, just may I ask?
Councilman Werther.
Yeah, one thing on this item. Mr. Vinnich, in, in the discussion ultimately with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, I realize they deal with larger bodies of water. If they have best practices in terms of maintaining bodies of water such as this, I think it'd be a good thing to bring back for the commission and the city as a whole and share, obviously, with the parties involved here.
I appreciate the suggestion, and I will ask.
Mayor Boland?
I'd also be interested in a rationale as to how we're going to explain to our taxpayers we didn't get free advice from M D N R before spending $5,000 on a survey that was done by an expert.
And again, I will ask if they would have done the, oh, thank you.
I'm going to struggle with that.
Seeing no further, motion to adjourn. Commissioner Helfry, second by Councilman Werther. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. We are adjourned.
Thank you all. We couldn't do it without you. I appreciate it.